Twenty-five at seven P. M. We close me into order by the salute to the flag.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Damato?
Here.
Councilman Catalano?
Here.
Councilman Graziano?
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson?
Present.
Councilwoman Schubert?
Here.
Councilman Yazdi?
Here.
Okay, also, Councilman Bronkhurst is excused. He had a family emergency about a half an hour ago. So we also have our administrative assistant, Amy Greenspan, business administrator, Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney, Dawn Sullivan.
Mayor, we also have with us tonight our CFO, Heather Barkin-Bush, our treasurer, Jasmine Ascona, and Andy Pascal from Sanial Client Company, our auditors.
Welcome. Okay, this meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and filed in the office of the municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance, which you enter through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk quarterly down the stairs and down through the building and out the doors. I need a motion to authorize the administrative assistant, Amy Greenspan, to temporarily serve as municipal clerk for this council meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we were supposed to have a presentation tonight, but the person we were going to give it to was unable to make it, so we'll probably put that off till next month. Mike will work that out. The non-agenda items?
No non-agenda. Everything's vacant.
Everything's vacant, okay. Okay, we do not have any non-agenda items. I'd like to open a motion to open early public comment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, please come up and state your name and address. Linda, drop the piece of paper behind you.
Linda Huntley, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I have COVID, so that's why I'm here in the mail.
Okay.
Eighty-six Van Dam Avenue. Since where the budget is not being approved, why are we going to be discussing it if there's going to be an amendment to it?
You guys want to explain the amendment before we go into it?
We advertised that we're going to have a public hearing, so we have to have a public hearing. It will go to amendments in the budget at the next year. And, I mean, if we want, we can do another public hearing.
Well, we'll discuss that later, but we're going to... A motion at the end to amend it on the September second, which you can see there. There was a miscue, I guess, in the budget, the way something was not in it.
Correct.
All right? Which is not going to change the dollar value any which way or the other. So we have to amend it to put that back into, which was the Passaic County Board of Health.
Service.
Service with the Passaic County Board of Health. Our line was missed. So that's what we're just going to add them into it at the September meeting. Nothing else is changing. Okay?
There's a couple of... Just to reiterate, there are a couple of line items that changed to offset the number that's coming in. That's why there's no change in the overall scheme of things at the end of the day.
Okay, then I'm going to request that there be another public hearing at the next meeting discussed, because there's going to be changes and I want to look at everything.
Well, you can ask questions. I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anyone else? You're next, man.
All right. My name is Anton Testino. I own a restaurant in Pompton Lakes.
You have to... And your address, your name and address.
I'm sorry?
Your name and the address. If you can go see the address at a restaurant, it would be fine.
Ah, the address is four thirty-seven Ringwood Avenue in Pompton Lakes. You guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm here because Governor Murphy passed a law about liquor licenses in the state. And now that a town borders another town, you have the ability, as long as it's the town and the council and everybody, to purchase a license outside of your town. So there is a license that's been inactive for three years in your town that I've been trying to purchase. And I don't know exactly how about going to it, but from what I understand, it's all up to the council. The information that I received was the fact that you guys could apply for another license. It could take a year or so, but I don't really know if that affects you guys, because this license has been inactive for three years.
Okay, well, first of all, we referred it to our attorney.
Yes.
When we saw the request, you might say.
Okay.
And according to our attorney, it's not allowed. And the second side of that, I would believe, and I'm speaking for me, not the rest of the council.
What part wasn't allowed?
To move a liquor license from this town to another town.
It is permitted, but it is only permitted when the receiving entity is in a redevelopment area and there is a whole process that both municipalities must go through. It's not just a, "Okay, yes, you can have it, here you go."
Yes, I am in the redevelopment.
And it was explained in detail to your attorney. And there is no replenishment of that license. So if Bloomingdale says, "Yes, you can take that license to Ringwood or Pompton Lakes," I'm sorry, "then they are out that license forever. They don't get a new one."
Oh, because I was informed that you guys were able to reapply for one.
No.
So that information's not correct, then?
That is incorrect.
Okay, so there's no possible way of doing something like this. I know the license has been active for years.
I'll be honest with you. I'm not going to give you...
Yeah, I don't lie to me.
I'm going to give you my opinion on it.
Yes.
I would never give a liquor license up in this town. We're trying to redevelop our main street. We're hoping restaurants come in and they will need a liquor license. We are so tight with them, we don't have any.
Okay.
All right? So that would be, I believe, foolish on our part to ever give up a liquor license to another town, which that would hurt our town.
Even though it hasn't been used in years?
It has been used since he closed, I know which year.
Two thousand, yeah, two thousand twenty-two.
But I know there's a guy that purchased that property.
Okay.
And he has not purchased the license. I know he hasn't purchased a license for whatever reason.
Yes.
Okay, whether it's money or whatever it is. And I know what he hopes to build there would be another restaurant, so...
In the future.
In the future, hopefully the near future.
Because when I was informed that the guy who purchased it, again, did agree to buy that license, but unfortunately, for whatever reason, like you said, he hasn't bought the license and there's no guarantee he's going to buy the license.
I just told you my opinion. I would never give it up.
So there's just no way that's happening at all for me?
No.
Unless they opened up a restaurant in your town.
You're more than welcome to do that, and then I'll support you a hundred percent.
So I took my restaurant and moved it here.
Because I know your restaurant.
No, you have no problem.
I've been to your restaurant many times. It's very good. So if you want to move, pick up and move here, I'll welcome you.
There's no locations.
Well, I'll find your property.
So, all right, so that's basically, I'm out until I either come to this town or...
I mean, it's really, at the end of the day, going through the process that our attorney has told us, but I just can't see... I mean, you guys can speak for yourselves, but I just can't see us ever giving them a liquor license.
I'm sorry, Pompton Lakes?
Yes.
Pompton Lakes doesn't want to give you another... Like, they can't open up another license to give you?
Oh, there's none available, but they can try, but it... Again, it could take years.
So they can apply just like we can?
Yeah, but it would take them a few years.
Not if they're at the population maximum.
Ah, well, with all the development in town, I'm sure there might be one available in a couple of years.
No, it was already established.
Oh, even with all the new residents coming in?
It doesn't change.
Yeah.
Well, isn't it based off of three thousand people per license?
That's when the statute was established.
Yeah.
There are no new...
Regulations?
No, there's no new licenses being issued.
No, no, I'm saying eventually they might be able to get one, once all the new development's done in Pompton Lakes, because there'll be a lot more people. They're estimating somewhere, I'm guessing, probably a couple thousand people. I mean, you're looking at over five hundred units.
My understanding is there is not going to be a change.
Okay, oh, yeah. And nobody in town is willing to sell theirs.
That may change, I mean, you know.
Yeah. And like I said, and nobody seems to want to sell theirs in Pompton Lakes. That's why I can't get one.
I can tell you that your place saved Christmas Day. I bought my fresh mozzarella from you on Christmas.
You're getting a little publicity here.
Well, I appreciate it. And I'm all about Bloomingdale, because a lot of people from this town do come to me.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for me to even be contributing back to the town, I mean, I do it at my house with taxes, but also through school systems and all that, so I figured there was a chance that I can come here and possibly see if there's any possible way. So let me ask you something.
Mm-hmm.
So you're telling me absolutely not, there's no way you're going to let that happen?
I gave you my opinion.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I know, you would have to... Everybody else's words count as well. So if you were me, what would you do to try to make that happen? Because you're the second town now, so the second town that I've gone to, and so far I'm getting nowhere.
I don't have an answer for you. I really don't.
So as you guys as the board, like, what would benefit... How could I go about trying to make this happen for myself and be a part of other people's communities? Like, what would I...
I can't...
What direction should I go in?
To be honest with you, I can't recommend anything to you.
Okay.
You're a business owner. We cannot do that. You have to, you know, it just doesn't work that way.
Like I said, I'm new to this.
Yeah.
I own a restaurant with a chef, like, that's my thing, but, you know, this part I'm not familiar with.
Well, we have rules and regulations that we have to follow with people, so there's things we cannot offer or whatever, we're just not allowed to do that.
Okay.
We can't go do that.
I got you.
Okay.
So only if I come to this town, that's the only way I can get that license.
I believe that license will stay here.
All right.
All right?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to come up?
No, but I wanted to talk about what's on the agenda.
This is for... That's at the end.
At the end, yes.
Yes. If it's talking about non-agenda items, you have to wait till the end. Yes.
I've got a procedural question on agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Charles Carpolis, if I really have... Piggybacking off of Linda's question on the budget, will there be a budget presentation tonight and will we be allowed to ask questions on the budget tonight?
Yes.
And during that, and that will be during the budget presentation?
It'll be after the presentation.
After presentation, perfect, thank you.
Just to reiterate on Linda's comment, at the second, you'll be able to comment on the amendment, not on the entire budget, on what the amendment is doing to the budget. So if you have questions on the budget, I'd ask them tonight, and on the second, we'll open a public hearing on the amendment and the amendment only.
So I have questions on the budget that was on the website. Should I ask them now?
When we go into the budget presentation tonight, after the presentation from the finance, we're going to go into the adoption of resolutions and stuff like that, at that point in time, we're going to open a public hearing on the budget. You can come up and ask any questions on the budget you want to ask, on the amendment, anything. My question was to Linda, or my answer back to Linda, because she asked if she was able to have a public hearing at the second. We will, but it won't open up to the budget. It'll just be the amendment that's on the budget that night that we'll be open up to.
Do you have to begin the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? No. We have a motion to close early public comment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Report to committee.
Mayor, at last Tuesday's Tri-Borough meeting, I got their numbers for July. Tri-Borough covered one hundred and twenty-one calls and missed nineteen. Average was eighty-six point four percent. Duty calls were seventy-five, and all calls were forty-seven. Butler had sixty-four calls, Bloomingdale had sixty-one, Kinnonan had fifty-one, and two calls unknown with town. They did mutual aid for Riverdale and Pompton Lakes and Wannecue and Lincoln Park. Paquonic had three, oh, and it said calls covered by other agencies. Paquonic had three, Ringwood had one, St. Clair's five, Wannecue one, Par Troy five, Montville one, Self-Transmit four. And there were no instructional meetings that month, and they have ten new members, and she's... and Gal holds probationary meetings with them once a month. They also have a couple of events. I don't have the exact dates, but for a fundraiser, they have a boot drive coming up with the county of Passaic. And it looks like they're going to do this on Union Ave, but they're going to be getting some kind of a permit because since it's a county road. And their beefsteak... Oh, they have the date for their beefsteak next year, it's April eighteenth, and their band is going to be high-strung. And it's at Bloomingdale's Fireman's Hall. They don't have a flyer how much the tickets are going to cost yet. And just from being in that meet... The night of the meeting was the Butler's Night Out on Crime, so there were a lot of people out, and they even had calls, but they had a huge teen squad. So a lot of these young... There were a lot of young kids that were training to be part of the EMT squad, so that was really nice. And next for the... For the Bloomingdale Free Public Library, they had a great program on July tenth with one hundred and forty-eight people that attended the Zuforia program. And Ally continues to just do wonderful programs. They also had a psychic medium at the... It was supposed to be here in the... At these chambers, but they moved it to Fireman's Hall, because they had over seventy-two participants with the... At the psychic mediums... Medium. The same woman is going to come and do a past-life regression presentation. I don't have a date for that yet. She... The Handbag Bingo had to be postponed. We don't have a... There's no date for that. Dueling Pianos is their annual event. It's a huge fundraiser for the library. That's on October seventeenth, and it's at the Glenwell Clubhouse. And there's also going to be a Queen's Tea. I don't have that date yet, but they have, again, everything's online. They have their summer reading program, and there's going to be a new way for all information to get disseminated throughout the... It's called Constant Contact. They're still up in the air about which one they're going to use, because they want the children, you know, everyone in the town to have a better access to, besides, like, the social media platforms, for people to know when they have their events. And for the Senior Center, as always, they have their Golden Age Club that has many programs available. On Tuesdays, they have their book club. Every Wednesday, they have their walking club. Wednesdays, they also have bingo and lunch. Every day, they have their... The Passaic County has their nutrition lunch that they have every month, plus chair aerobics. On August twenty-sixth, they're having an alcohol presentation at the Senior Center. And on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, Walking Club is at nine A. M., and then they're going to do bingo and pizza at ten thirty A. M. All these events are available at the Senior Center. They have information there, including their trips that they have every year. And you could go online to check them all out.
Okay.
Okay, two items. First, we had Sloane Park Festival on Saturday, which, despite the heat, I think was well-attended and was a good time for everybody. I'd like to thank Linda Bennett and Sally Vasili, in particular, did a lot of work to get this up and running, and always do for each event. But I also like to thank the mayor, and as well as Mike, and Amy, who did a lot of work with the food vendors, not only for this, but for all of our events. And of course, the DPW Police Department and Bloomingdale Rec. Again, it was a really good turnout and a fun evening, I think, for everybody. On the Economic Development Commission front, we're continuing our Bites of Bloomingdale. That's the showcasing different restaurants and places where you can buy food in town, so every month we try to do another video. So we're going to keep that going until we hit up every one. And in addition to planning Celebration Day, which will be in September, we also have Townwide Scavenger Hunt, which is going to be on October eighteenth at nine thirty, meeting at Sloane Park. That's all.
Public events. September eleventh, seven P. M. is our September eleventh Walk. That's going to be from Sloane Park to Butler Park. September twentieth, Celebration Day, and Bob, College School five K. John, did you want to mention anything on Celebration Day?
No, not right now. We'll do that next week.
All right, then. The Health Department, I don't recall if I mentioned it last time. They introduced an ordinance entitled Regulation of Electronic Smoke Devices and Psychoactive Products. If you have any questions, you can contact the Board of Health President, Marco Iglesias. Yesterday, I put a video out on social media about contacting employees and departments throughout the borough. We... Again, I've mentioned these things on a number of occasions, but we do have people that are Googling phone numbers for borough departments, and Google is not the place to get it. We have found that there are wrong numbers out there. So should you have any interest in contacting an employee or a department, please go to BloomingdaleNJ.net, and you will find all the information out on our website. Everything is accurate. Search and Rescue. On August third, the Bloomingdale Search and Rescue Team was dispatched, this is the second time, to Pompton Lakes for missing juvenile. The search extended into Sunday, when the juvenile was successfully located by ground searchers. The OEM Coordinator from Pompton Lakes is Ally Evangelista. Al had high praise for Sam Scatoro, who's the head of our Search and Rescue, and our entire Search and Rescue team. He specifically mentioned that search and rescue presentation that Bloomingdale had here a couple months ago was instrumental in guiding their efforts on this second search and rescue that they had within a very short period of time. Sam and the West Mulford Search and Rescue Team collaborated seamlessly, strategically mapping search zones. They applied behavioral profiling, which is incredibly important, techniques to narrow down the search area. Al also appreciated that Sam concluded the operation, creating space for team members to share insights and feedback. The feedback from everyone was overwhelmingly positive. We have decided that we're going to be offering a second presentation on October first. We're opening it up to a larger area now, so that will be police departments, fire departments, OEM coordinators, you know, anyone, rescue... Search and Rescue Teams. Another thing on the OEM side is Pompton Lakes has been utilizing ham radio operators for use for when they have a major incident in their town, which they have not yet, but they are training ham radio operators to deal with emergencies for contact information to the public in case of a major emergency in their town. They will be inviting Bloomingdale to train with them. We do have one person already that's interested in joining Pompton Lakes. We will be receiving a flyer from Pompton soon, and we will be putting that out on our social media and our website for any ham operators in Bloomingdale to join them. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for residents to join our OEM team, and in case we have a major emergency, we will be prepared should total communications go down. You know, after talking with Ally Evangelista, it's been very interesting that he can cite many, you know, he can cite many times in the country where ham operators have been absolutely instrumental in getting information out to the public during major emergencies. So I think this is going to be another wonderful step for Bloomingdale. We just have to get there. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have a flyer from them, and off we go.
Good job. Right? Nothing for tonight. Tom McAntham?
No, nothing, sir. I just didn't know from a health perspective, Tom, do you want to discuss anything about the recent outbreak in Chilton?
It really was not an outbreak. It's a good question, and we did have a number of people making comments on social media about it. An outbreak is two or more individuals. We did have one individual from Passaic County. The Board of Health did not want to discuss where in Passaic County that person was located. They wanted to give that person privacy, but it was just one individual. That was a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, there has been nothing.
Good news.
So fingers crossed, we're out of it. And... But, you know, our Health Department was right on top of it, along with the state, New Jersey State Health Department.
Yeah, the information that you guys put out, it's not my question, is it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mike?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Don?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Okay. The only thing that I have tonight is I was contacted by the county. As people should know, that the horse farm on Union Ave is going to become a county park on September twenty-third, six to eight P. M. They're going to be here to do a presentation and look for input from our community, since it's in our town. That is scheduled for September twenty-third, six to eight, and if we... I asked them today how many people they think they're going to get. If it's more than what this building holds, we will move over to the Fireman's Hall, and they can do their presentation over there. I reserved that with our rec director today. So that's a good thing, so that's moving down there. That's pretty much all that I have. So, okay, so let's move on to item ten, Resolution Number two thousand twenty-five, eight dot one, the Cessent Agenda. I need a motion to approve the Cessent Agenda. Second. Any questions?
Not a question, but just for Brian Townsend, just congratulations, thirty-nine years. That's credibly impressive.
Yes, Brian is retiring. And he's been an asset to our town.
Yep.
Working in our tax office with Barbara and the Grizzly Bree.
Multiple people.
Multiple people, so we wish him the best. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Okay. All right, before we go to item C, we're going to do our budget presentation. You guys got the floor.
My name is Ashman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashman. I'm the municipal treasurer. I will be assisting with the budget presentation this evening. So this evening, we will be discussing the goals of the borough, the budget challenges that we face, our tax breaks... Calender year 2025 ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A colon 4 dash 45 dot 14.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open up public hearing?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? Seeing no one, a motion to close?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption?
Some more.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. All right, before we go to Item C, we're going to do our budget presentation. You guys got the floor.
My name is Ashman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashman. I'm the Municipal Treasurer. I will be assisting with the budget presentation this evening. So this evening, we will be discussing the goals of the borough, the budget challenges that we faced, our tax breaks down, our year-to-year overall expenditures, as well as the revenues and our capital projects. For the most part, our goal continues to be to balance the budget as required by New Jersey statute, to increase our revenues while simultaneously reducing debt. The budgets must be balanced, as I mentioned, per state statute, which means that the appropriations have to equal the revenues. We look for ways to increase revenue because this would allow the town flexibility for larger and better sustainable projects. We always welcome the public to provide any recommendations if you guys also think of any recurring revenue streams. And in regards to the reduction of debt, debt directly affects our budget, our municipal credit rating, and how much we are eligible to borrow in the future. This is a recurring expense, and it will continue to affect future generations of this town. I'm sorry.
Just, you said recurring revenue, but we also had a one-time revenue this year for the land sale, a portion of that money, which was used towards the budget to help balance it.
Some of the challenges, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Some of the challenges that we faced are decrease in revenue due to termination of shared service agreement, decrease in state aid and grants. Specifically, on the revenue side, the state aid decreased this year by $56,000. On the appropriation side, our grants decreased by $68,000. This is money that we've applied for and we're unfortunately not approved for. The other sides of the challenges include increase in vendor costs and increase in statutory expenditures. Our pension liabilities have increased roughly 3.5%. Our group insurance has increased a little bit more than that, roughly around $300,000. And our workman's compensation has increased by $55,000. These increases unfortunately are out of our control. They are statutory. We are required to provide these coverages, and we're doing the best that we can to cover those expenses in the budget. There is also an increase in debt service as the borough took advantage of bonding last year because the long-term interest rates versus the short-term interest rates were significantly less. It's not coming up, I'm not sure. All right, that's fine, I'll explain that. So the total anticipated tax revenue for calendar year 2025 is $34,776,000. 55% of that is apportioned to the school with a $19,072,000 apportionment. This is per their A4F, that is their format for how they decide what they will be charging the borough annually. The county is accounting for the remaining 18%, which is roughly $6.3 million. Open space accounts for about $182,000. The library portion is about 1%, which accounts for $410,000. And the municipal portion is 25%, accounting for $8,809,000. I do want to mention that the library portion, we don't have any say over as well. That is a state calculation, and we are required to provide them with those funds. Okay, that one's showing. Okay, cool. All right, that's fine. What would have been shown in the graph would have been a comparison from 2021 to current, comparing the anticipated revenue and actual revenue received. Every year, we've anticipated revenue, we've realized in cash, or received slightly more than we anticipated. Last year, we received roughly $200,000 more in revenue than we had anticipated, and that can be attributed to increase in court fines, as well as increase in construction that unfortunately, we can't anticipate too much of because we simply don't know who's going to get fined for what and who's going to construct in town. In 2023, similarly, we anticipated about $14.3 million, and we received about $14.6. As far as the expenditures, we have generally underspent on the expenditure apportion side. So from '21 and '22, we've underspent by roughly about $100,000. '23 was the only year in which we went slightly above the appropriations due to an emergency appropriation for the master plan. We appropriated a total of $14,352, which increased the budget that was appropriated for by $44,000. Last year, we came in flat, so we expended what was appropriated. And this year, we're anticipating appropriating $15,410,000. I was not going to show you that. All right. So this slide is supposed to show the total expenditures as percentages comparing 2025 to 2024. We have listed that our statutory expenses in 2024 was 12%. Insurance was 11%, debt was 8%, and all other expenditures was 69%. To note, statutory expenditures are comprised of PERS, pension, which is the pension for non-police and firemen, Social Security, police and fireman pension, unemployment, and DCRP, which is a deferred compensation pension plan. The insurance covers general liability, workman's compensation, employment group health, health benefit waiver, and other insurance premiums. Comparatively to 2025, our statutory expenditures remain roughly the same, 12%. Our insurance increased by 3%, and our debt stayed relatively the same at 8%. To account for the increase in insurance, we did reduce our other expenditures by 3%. So we went from 69% to 66%.
On those four categories you had there, all other expenses went up roughly about 2.7%?
Yes.
I don't have the other three numbers, but I know, like, insurance was a 25% increase total from '24 to '25.
15%.
15%, sorry. Statutory went well up, and obviously debt, because we bonded, permanent bond, that went up from last year as well.
Correct. So because insurance was one of the categories that went up the most monetarily, I did want to bring to attention that we are currently in a HIF, an Health Insurance Fund. The other option is to be part of the state health benefit program. In 2024, our HIF rates increased 6.78%, while the state health benefit program increased 21%. Our 2025 HIF rates increased 15%, and the state health benefits increased 10%. However, the state health benefit plan has already put out information stating that they are going to increase the rates again 21% this year. Our insurance carriers have informed us that we will potentially also go up, but it will not be at the same rate that this data is going up. They've also mentioned that many of these increases are attributed to increasing use and demand for certain prescription drugs and specialized providers. Last but not least, our capital improvement projects. Of the projects that we've completed, they include both playgrounds, our gas buoy improvements, Catherine and Bailey Road improvements, our senior pavilion, Orchard and Wallace, our GPW salt shed, the Walter T. Bergen exercise equipment on the walking track, our update to the police body worn camera, our ACO fencing, and aqua test purchase also for the police department. As you can see, the majority of these were funded partially by grants. Of the current projects, we have at least two road projects, Annan Elm and Hillcrest, both supplemented by DOT grants. We have our senior center floor, which will be supplemented by a Passaic County grant. We have the Delager Playground, which is supplemented by multiple grants. We're getting the local recreation improvement grant for that, as well as open space. We have multiple stormwater improvements that we are planning to address a lot of the concerns for the residents in town due to the flooding that they've been experiencing. We're going to be doing various borough improvements as needed, which include HVAC improvements, PD building improvements, servers, anything that we need to continue operating to the best of our capacity for the residents. And we will also be doing various road improvements. These are going to be smaller improvements, like road paving, so like, if you see a pothole, you can call the borough, we'll add it to the list, we'll assess it, and make sure that it's not a more pervasive issue. And I believe those are the projects that we have pending for 2025, beginning of 2026.
Yeah, road improvement would be, we've put off Snake Dan Road for the governing body for four or five years now, so we're going to go in and fix that drain over there at the end of Snake Dan Road, probably within the next two weeks. So those are the type of road improvements we're talking about.
And that is the summation of the budget for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judge.
Of course. My pleasure.
Ready for questions?
As ready as ever.
Item C, Public Hearing and Amendment for the 2025 Municipal Budget. Public Notice Statement, please.
Mayor, this is the time fixed for the public hearing of municipal budget and tax resolution for 2025. The budget was approved by the governing body on July 15th, 2025, was advertised as required by law on July 22nd, 2025, together with the notice of hearing for this time.
Okay. Adoption of Resolution Number 2025, 8 dot 13, to read the budget by title. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some more.
Second.
We could do roll call, and that can do it. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Schubert?
I just have a, questions will be next week, right? Next week, questions?
No, questions would be following this when we open up to the public hearing. This is just so, we're bringing this budget by title.
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Before we open up to public hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of, in order of rising, as nearly, rising your hand as nearly as I can determine. Address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the governing body or the municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before municipal budget. School or county matters are not proper subject to this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. Do I have a motion to open up public hearing?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I now declare the public hearing open for the 2025 budget. Anyone wishing to come up? Linda's always first.
Linda, 86, Van Dan. I just want to address the common that we made one comment in particular, where it states that we are stating the debt service was due to change in the short term to long term. The debt service is because of so much debt. Our debt is just runaway. I mean, we have up to $17 million, then we have the amount of leases that we've got. Our debt is out of control. That's why our debt service is so high, not because we run from short term to long term.
Yes, so when I made the short term to long term comment, I was discussing the rate at which we can bond for money. So for bands, we are not required to bond up to 10 years. And so we could have continued to roll the current notes that we had year over year until they were ready to be bonded for, but at that point, it was very possible that the rate at which we would have bonded would have been higher, close to 7 or 8%. We were able to get a bond rating last year of 4.5%, which is relatively good considering the way the economy is right now.
But the debt is still high.
The debt is so high, that's not, that wasn't in question.
That's the issue, though. I'm also concerned, I mean, nobody ever addresses the water and sewer. That's in our budget, not water and sewer rates. We're supposed to go down, we went to Butler. That never happened. And now, we went up 10%.
Well, let's just break it, let's break out, if you want to go to the ordinance, we'll break it out, okay? The water portion of our bill from Butler is cheaper, okay? The increase in our cost for, is your sewer. We have no control over the rate of the sewer, okay? Butler can only raise us a maximum of 2%.
So we have a 15-year contract.
Right, we're 15, 2% a year. The sewer authority can raise us whatever they want to cover their bills. Remember, there's four towns involved in the sewer authority, all right? So it's water coming in, and we pay a lot more for water going out. So it's really not the Butler problem, it's the sewer problem.
When our rates went up last time.
Correct.
It went up everything.
Everything went up, because you increase your rate for it all. But you can't, you can't, you can't just say because we went to Butler Water that it is more expensive because of Butler Water, all right? Because Butler, we have a set rate with Butler. We do not have a set rate with the sewer authority. I didn't cause that problem, you didn't cause that problem. This is going back, whatever, because everybody, but all this capacity that we have to pay for amongst, what's it, a third of houses in town?
Capacity and the debt, when they do projects, millions of dollars worth of projects in each town, we all share the debt on that.
And we share that cost.
That's the majority of the cost of debt to the sewer authority.
Our water and sewer was supposed to go down, and it never did.
Your water is supposed to go down, not the sewer. Sewer never go down.
But it never went down.
Okay.
I'm also concerned because our overall spending keeps going up. I mean, you keep saying how great we're doing, well, we're not doing great. I mean, we're going to have over 7% increases this year. That's a lot, that's a big increase, and that's just unacceptable. I mean, I know there's nothing that anyone can do about it, but it's just unacceptable. And the majority of it is due to this rate. For our house, it's rated at 325 assessment. Total tax, total local tax is 262. It's almost half of the total increase. And we're only a quarter of what the net taxes are, so that's a big problem. And that lays right there.
That lays everywhere. That goes from the past when nothing was done. Now, if you remember correctly, before we got involved, there was no road improvements, there was no, our infrastructure was horrible. We got mandated by the state to fix our water problems that we have here, which we're doing every single day, where we're changing meters, or we're putting new pipe in the ground that's mandatory because we're getting rid of all the lead. The road improvements we made, the park improvements we made, over the last 13, 14 years, we've paved over, I would say now we're about 80% of our roads are redone. Because before we got involved, everybody up here and the people before us, since Ray got involved back in 2012, there was nothing done here, and taxes were going through the roof. This is my opinion.
For a lot of the road services, and you're just paying, you're just paving and paving, and paying for it, and paying for it.
Well, that's not true. See, you're wrong again. Because every road that we redo, all right, and we just did Catherine Street. We test the water lines, we test the sewer. If they're good, we don't touch it. Hamilton Street, Boston Street, Chestnut Street.
Orchard.
Orchard Street, all those improvements we made, we did it from the underground up. If we would have just did the DOT grant and paved it, how many, we have 15 water main breaks going back on Boston Street, 15. And that pipe was over 20 feet in the ground. That pipe has been eliminated, we put brand new pipe, we have not had a problem since. Park Ave, we did. We just did, we did Wallace, we did, Star Lake was done, Raffigan Road was done, Andrew's Place was a nightmare, a nightmare, because whoever built that, put the water line in, I don't know what they did, because the water went in every different direction. So we had to wind up replacing it all. You don't, if you have areas where your water lines are 80, 100 years old, which is the flats, Andrew's Place is, I call that a new development. That was built when I was a kid, but whoever built it just threw pipe in the ground. And we're having the same problem that we're going to have on Annan Elm with water, because there's three separate water lines that go down that street. All, I think they're all asbestos. That all has to be replaced. There's no sense putting a blanket over something that's just going to break. So you do it right, or you don't do it at all. In the past, they didn't do it at all. So we've done a lot. I know our debt has increased, I tell you, I agree with you all the time with that, we had that conversation. But if you look at the overall improvements of what we've made in this town, as this council, as councils before us, since Ray and I got involved, we've done a lot of improvements to make our town better. And I far as I'm concerned, when you do, when you make your roads better, your housing is worth more, you feel proud of where you live, it's just, it's just the way I feel.
Well, I just think the debt is out of control, I think the spending is out of control. And I also think the lives are worth it, it's been done, there were a lot of streets that were done that didn't have to be done.
That's your opinion?
Yes.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but we have our engineer go down, and we do all the tests, and we know there's bad things under the ground. We can only go by what our professionals are telling us. That's our water guys, they tell us the water main breaks, they tell us where they have all the problems, they tell us the valves that are bad, the valves that were done on Leary, three valves in there that were, were, were. Main Street were bad, we just had a water main break down on Main Street, thank God it didn't happen because the county's going to be paving that road. They fixed all that. You got to fix things that are, that are broke, or they're bad, or they're going to break, you got to get there before it, so you don't have a problem. So we fixed a lot. And I know our debt went up, it's nothing new, but we've done a lot. We didn't just take money and spend it on things that should not be done. But we've done a lot. We didn't just take money and spend it on things that should not be done. That's my opinion. So, but I appreciate what you're telling us, but, you know.
I disagree.
Okay.
Can I also make a comment about your comments regarding expending going up? So this year, we actually matched mostly the other expenses that we raised last year. So we've really buttoned down on the spending in this particular calendar year. And Mike and I, as well as everybody else who works in finance, have a bigger plan to try to maintain, right? And to limit how much debt we continue to take out moving forward. So we are aware of your concerns as well as all other residents' concerns. And we are taking it to, you know, to heart and we are implementing changes to adjust them.
Anyone else?
Charles, for all of 75 billion and a half, this is all my previous questions I asked last month, July. You're saying we're restricting the comments to the budget.
This is a budget hearing, yeah.
Right. So on page 12, I just want to confirm. The rate for this year is going to be 4.767.
That's the tax rate.
Tax rate, total tax rate.
Total tax rate.
For this year, 2025, will be 4.767.
That is correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, which will be a 3.9% increase over the previous year.
Correct.
Correct.
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
No.
Point 3. So the previous year was 4.587.
Right. And according to the sheet that...
Point 039.
3.932.
So it's a 3.
Point 039.
Right.
So it would be... Yeah, the increase is 3%.
Almost 4%.
No, no.
Yeah.
Point. It's already a percentage.
Oh, that's right.
Either those is already a percentage rate. So that's point... You've gone from 4.587.
So you got 2% increase on the school.
From 4.587.
You got 7% increase on the...
To 4.76.
You got 5% increase on the county. You're going to get a point 03?
No, 3.9.
Yes, 3.9.
So...
Year on year, what's the increase?
To 4.7 should be...
I do want to make the point, these formulas are locked by the county, the state. We cannot change these formulas. So it's showing as 0.039.
Percent.
The rest of the column is in a percent form. The change from one year to the next is point 18.
Charles, they're taking... The math and math, if I'm doing it quickly in my head correctly, is 4.767 minus 4.587 divided by 4.587. So it is point 03 because you've only moved point 18.
3% to 4% increase.
Correct. You've only moved point 18 over 4.587.
Okay.
Take point 18 out of 4.587.
Charles is right.
What is that? Is it 3.9?
It's right. As I said, it's a 3.9% increase. It's a 3.9% increase from last year.
Okay, so it's a 3.9% year-on-year increase.
Right. Our rate last year was 4.587. This year, it's 4.76.
All right. And now I'm going to get a little dicey here. You won't be able to answer this question. For Q1 and Q2 next year, what's the plan?
In what regards?
In regards to, is there going to be a tax increase for next year? Are you going to...
We will know that. We will know that. We're doing the budget next year. We have to wait. We do the budget next year.
But here it is, August the 19th, and we're doing the budget for this year.
Correct.
We're going to repeat that process next year. So are we going to get... I don't want to use the word blindsided because that's a negative thing, but is there some way to level this out so we're not giving the public a surprise?
We're not giving the public a surprise, okay? We've been working on this budget since last October.
Yeah, since October 24.
And we've talked about it. And then when you present your budget, no different when you present your budget, the public gets a surprise.
First quarter of this year was zero, second quarter is zero, and now we have to make up for those two quarters that were zero.
It's always, every year is like that.
I agree with that. Does it have to be that way? I just want to throw that out there. We need to think so that we don't keep blindsiding the public, I would say financially.
We're not blindsiding the public. We're not blindsiding the public. That's my...
I'll ask Andy, is it possible to do an estimated tax bill in January, the first quarter? No.
No?
State statute.
The state law, state statutes, they don't allow that.
Yes.
So you don't know what you're going to spend next year until you already spent half the year.
Correct.
I just want to understand the process. This is new to me, so I'm not trying to be funny here or nasty. I'm just trying to understand the process. It sounds like you have to go halfway through the year.
Normally, we...
We know where you're spending it.
Charles, normally, normally, this budget is already done, normally, in our past. We're usually done by May, June, right?
Well, the goal is April.
As early as April, we passed the budget. This year, the way the budgets were going, we worked on this budget to get it as best as we can. We had to wait, all right, on what's going to be... You call it transparent, I'll tell everybody is we have a land sale. We want to make sure that land sale went in, that we could take that money, non-refundable deposit money, and put it towards this year's budget to help. This year's a tough year. We've had a lot of increases we can't control. You've had the same thing.
I get that.
All right, so we sat there and worked on this and we cut everybody's budget within the borough. How many percent?
5%.
5% across the board from what they had last year. So we cut as much as we can. The answer is, we need two police vehicles. We cut all the vehicles out. All right, because we don't want to borrow money to buy vehicles, especially cars. Big items, you have to borrow money because they'll last for a lot longer, all right? So we have a leasing program that we've... But this year, we're not buying any vehicles at this point. So next year, when we... Hopefully, our reserve will grow because every year we use our reserve and give it back to the taxpayer to get our budget down. We've averaged, I think we're at an average now over 14 years, I said it last meeting, about $35, $40 on the average increase. All right, this year's been a tough year for us. And through the budget committee, they worked. Our finance department tore the budget apart. I don't know how many times we went through that and we said, it just isn't good enough. We got to do more. We're at the point now, this is as best as we can get it. Yes, we're getting hit with a tax increase this year. That's... If you really look at the big picture of the average house, it's $18 a month, 60 cents a day, whatever you want to call it. It's not that bad. It could have been a lot worse if we would have adopted earlier. We don't want to do that. We want to keep cutting, cutting, cutting.
But I don't understand that. John, can you explain that to me? You said adopted it earlier.
We could have. It would have been worse because we wouldn't have the other money to apply to the budget.
Okay, so...
Okay.
Will that be in the amendment presentation?
No.
No.
It's in the budget now.
So it's in the budget now.
It's already in.
So it's a 95-page budget before the transparent. It's kind of hard to find a 95-page budget.
The land sale's in there.
Land sale's in there.
$400,000.
I'm just saying, it's really... Need to get a pickaxe and drill in really hard.
You know, budget's so long. You mean, you have a lot of liabilities.
Okay, I'm just trying to make a point. It's not the best model. I think we need to figure out how we get a better model. Because as we go forward, we need to be in lockstep. To your point, the school is half the budget, right, taxpayers?
Mm-hmm.
Right, we need to be in coordination.
No, no, but I mean, the school's not up for discussion, but the...
No, not bring the school up.
It's not up for discussion. It's the model, how we communicate with the public.
The school is half of the tax, half the total tax rate. It's more than double what the municipal budget is. And there are multiple models to take. I think one of the years, one of the things that made this year hard for our budget committee is the fact that they've done so much to hold steady and aren't operating at the same surplus. So the other model you could take is one that you're probably familiar with, which is rate increases year over year.
You have bank cap. That means you were under your budget a couple of years, but now we're catching up. So I just, we need to think it through. Should we be under our budget caps that many years, that much, and then try to catch up in one year? That's why I have some concerns.
Do residents want us to take their money sooner and hold it for when we need it later? Or should we leave it in their pockets and then take it when we need it? Because...
It depends how much you take and when you take it. I'd rather you take 10 bucks from me every month than take $100 in December when I need it.
But we're talking over decades, we're talking over multiple years. So we're talking about that $40 increase. We could do that and then we could end up with a surplus similar to what the school has done. And then ask for more money when we need to do more projects. Or when we have a rough year, we can do everything we can to extend however long we take the budget and then take on as much money as we can to try and reduce that impact.
Okay.
So all I can tell you is that, and you guys are on the budget committee, you can agree with me or not, is every year we go through the budget and we start in October, November, because they have to... All departments have to give us their budget by October. We start doing things in November to start tearing it apart. We have one-on-ones, Mike has one-on-ones in our finance with each department head, and they go through it. Explain your budget to me. Why do you need this? Why do you need that? And then we either agree, disagree, or we cut it. This year, we cut it, okay? Because there is some things that in certain departments, police and DPW, and I'll throw fire in there, there's things that they need every year that have to be done. So you can only cut so much. And I can just, I'll put my fire department hack, because when I was chief, I had a budget. I had a budget of X amount of thousands of dollars. But there's certain things you have to do. You have to do ladder testing. It's not cheap. You have to do hose testing, where every piece of hose a company comes and tests for safety. All your SCBA's have to be checked. All your bottles got to be hydro tested every year. This is thousands of dollars. It's not like I can go back when it used to be, but they didn't do any of that. But everything now is safety, safety, safety. Our police department goes through recertifications every year and the training that they put in. Training's not free. We have to pay for it. All those are not free and they have to... Those guys, they get certified and shoot. There's things that we have to do. So we go, and you know that, and when we go through line by line and we can see certain things. Vehicles, all right? I think a vehicle for the police department that runs every day, what's the shifts? 12-hour shifts. The cars run every day. Even when they stop, they usually don't turn them off. They come back here because those cars have to be running when they have an incident or the patrol and the tailor, whatever they're doing. It's not just mileage on them because some of them have 120,000 miles on. It's hours on the motor, okay? Because even if they sit, they're still running. So we have to make sure our departments are given the tool to do their jobs.
Yeah, Mike complains not how you've been spending the money. I think we need to figure out a better model, how we collect the money and communicate that collection.
So Charles, can I?
Just so I understand, average increase in town was about $200 before John and I got here, okay? Every year, our taxes, municipal taxes will go up approximately $200 a year, right? Over the last 14 years, our averages below $40. You're saying we should have just taxed people the same $200 because the model would have been easier. You would have paid an extra $12,000 to the town, sitting it in account. We have millions of dollars in surplus, so we could just do a $200 increase this year instead of the $260 that we are increasing. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a pretty stupid model as far as I'm concerned. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Because I'd rather have my $12,000 sitting in my pocket, not in the town's.
But when you tax the public off-guard, like a lot more off-guard, ran July 4th weekend, that was not a good thing.
Well, let me tell you what's off-guard, okay? Every single year, my school taxes going up double digits and then hearing that you got $4 million sitting in your surplus that you have now, we have great plans for, right? That's catching the public off-guard, that we are taxing you and putting it into a savings account. That's catching people.
So that we can replace a school that you've asked me to replace for over 10 years, right? So that's what we're doing with it. So we're doing a good thing with the money.
Yeah, but you didn't come out and tell us that upfront. You told us that after you had the $4 million.
As soon as we knew we had it.
And what did you do? You went in and approved, you know, below kindergarten grades that brought in more residents, more expenses, and now filled in every...
And more revenue, we got tons of money from the state, which also has that $4 million. Thank you. Thank you for putting all the good things.
But it didn't make my...
I don't want to get out of control and go into a big argument here, all right? Charles has given us his opinion. I appreciate it. This budget is the budget that it is. Every year, I guarantee every year, past and future, we've worked on that budget that you can't believe. We go through it every single year, all right? So in years past, we did a... I'll call, we stabilized taxes on the municipal side, all right? Because nobody came up here and told us about our formula was bad. You didn't come back then. It's okay. I don't... You can come up and give me your opinion. I appreciate that. This year, and I keep on saying that we had a tough year, as other towns and...
Every town.
Every town around us had huge problems this year, all right? We didn't do that bad compared to the other ones. I saw, um, was it Tom's River, 16% increase?
Hey.
All right, so we...
All the state entities.
We all pay the same taxes.
Boy, now, ship is very expensive right now, so yeah, we're all having...
Everything's expensive.
I appreciate that. You asked me that last time in July.
Everything's expensive.
It is expensive. I'm not faulting you on the expense side. I think we just need to figure out how we can communicate more transparent on the revenue collection side. That's my point.
So we don't typically do actual tax bills until the third quarter. Um, that's just the tradition. Most first and second quarters are estimated tax bills. I can tell you that as far as working on the budget itself, we are limited in many aspects as far as anticipating revenue. We can't exceed what we anticipated the year before. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we have to be somewhat conservative for what we're doing. And once we kind of know what we're going to receive revenue for the municipality to utilize, that limits us as far as expenditures. I understand that it's a little jarring to receive that on a holiday weekend, all-in-one chat. But our offices are always open. We've always asked residents, please come in. We start our budget process, as the mayor and other members have mentioned, in October, November of the previous year. We welcome all residents to come in and ask questions. There are certain things that we know what the expenses are going to be for next year, right? We have CBAs, collective bargaining agreements. We have shared service agreements. There are certain things that we can anticipate that we know are fixed. There are other things that we don't know are fixed. And it is not necessarily wise to adopt a budget if we are anticipating a revenue that we ultimately don't receive. We don't know if we're going to receive energy receipt tax next year from the state, and that's about half a million dollars. If we don't receive that, that ends up turning...
When do you know about the state grants? Maybe that's the part I'm missing as well.
Do you remember when we get the state happy lunch? Around June, every year.
You don't know what year.
Right, so we are a calendar year. We're January, December. The state is July to June. It is, and so...
It's not a small portion, but it's a half a million dollars.
Right, no, but still, it's a challenge. I appreciate that. And I'm just, to be fully transparent, I'm here for very selfish reasons, not for 2025, but 2026. Because at some point, the referendum will impact the taxpayer. I'm trying to be transparent with the taxpayer and be coordinating with the borough so we can minimize the pain on the taxpayer.
To be fair, and I think there are multiple members on this panel, on the council, who have discussed whether or not it has always been in the best interest to try and hold zero when we can or whether pre-planning a little increase year over year is a good idea. That being said, I understand, on the school side, right, and create that... I do kind of agree with Ray that because of the increases in the past and the size for which they were, that led to the tax rates that we have now, why they had the opinion that like, hey, let's keep some of the money in the pocket because the increases were so large for so long. I'm a new member to the council. I look back and I go, how and why? I'm glad you kept them where they were. Now we're having to find that balancing point and move forward. And that's what you're saying. I understand. But I want to be clear that people need to understand that that's what you're asking is, should we be taking money to plan for future and create a savings account on your dollar or not?
I'm saying we need to be geniuses and find that right point. Maybe it's not the max, but maybe it's not so low. Maybe you need to find a little sweet spot in between.
And you have to be able to have bank cap.
And the other side of it is, other side of it is, Bloomingdale always have one big problem, no revenue.
No revenue.
No.
And now we're trying to... We're trying... That's why we have so many shared services. That's the only way we can have new revenue coming in.
Understood.
All right, and then hopefully with new development, we'll get new revenue coming in, but that's going to take time, all right? And we get, we're getting pieces and pieces coming in, but, you know, everybody tells they want to build. And I'll be honest with you, just the Main Street project, I believe down by Lena's would have been started if the state didn't come in and change the floodplain.
No, understood.
All right, our Main Street is almost hand-tied, the lower end, um, down there to develop something nice. I mean, I drove through Pompton Lakes today and I know people don't like it, but that huge apartment building they put up, they put a second one up. I mean, I drove through Pompton Lakes today, and I know people don't like it, but that huge apartment building they put up, they put a second one up. There's a second one down the street.
Don't get me going on that one.
I'm just telling you what's going, I'm just telling you the way the state's going, all right? And I've, I've talked to a lot of state people. All they want you to do is keep building.
Yeah, I don't agree with all their logic.
I don't agree with their logic either, because we all suffer.
I don't want to get off point, sorry.
Right. So I just, you know, we're, we're kind of on the same page, but if we don't do what we're asked to do by the state, we're gonna suffer on that end.
Yeah, I hear that, and I...
I drive around and...
From unfunded funded mandates as well, so we can sympathize with you on that point as well. Thank you very much for listening to my complaints and comments.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to... Rich Schiller, 96 Riverview Road, Pompton Lakes. Um, I just wanted to address sort of between, because obviously, you know, two-plus years on the Board of Ed Budget Committee, 10-plus years here on the Budget Committee. Um, I just wanted to point out, to Charles's point, you know, when I came over from the Board of Ed, and I've thought this the entire time I was councilman, to me, I, I mean, Board of Ed is basically doing its budget at the same time the council is doing its budget. Only they're doing it for, you know, June 30th, or July 1st, whoever you want to call that cutoff. It always seemed insane to me that we were developing budgets for a time that had already passed. And I think that's part of what he's talking about. And obviously, nobody here has any control about that. It's just a frustrating thing that we're stuck with. And I, I think, um, you know, I think kind of, you know, it's a touchy subject, so I think maybe some of what Charles said, you know, obviously the blame goes further up. So, you know, it's like, why are we making a budget? You know, even in April, or whatever it is, we've already lost an entire quarter, right? It just makes no sense to me. You know, there's like maybe three things coming from the Board of Ed to the council that made no sense to me. Still don't make any sense to me. And quite frankly, the timeline of the budget is one of the major ones. I mean, I know from working on it for over a decade, how much work you all put into the budget, and how much you try, you know, to, to keep the pain away from the taxpayers, because obviously, when you're up here, you're one of them. But, you know, there are different philosophies, and I think, especially this year, you were really put under a very bad circumstance, like you said, like a lot of other towns. But, you know, I don't want to see the two major, you know, things in this town fighting with each other.
It's not our intent.
Right. I'm just saying, it, it's a difficult year for everybody. Nobody wants to see their taxes broke, no. The, the situation you're given was bad, including the timing. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there, just because, I've got it, something that's bothered me for 15 years, why don't we do our budget then? Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Pam Pierce, 17 Breland Avenue. Just wanted to, to put out, you know, I know that there's gonna be a, an educational, you know, school increase with the taxes. As it is right now, I was hoping to live in my hometown for the rest of my life. I can't. So right now, I'm, I'm having to work, because I have to pay my taxes. So I just found out with my increase, I'm gonna be close to 20 grand in that house. So when I first came, came to that house, I lived in Bloomingdale almost all my life. So when I came to this last house, which is 24 years ago, my taxes were only $7,500. I'm like, oh, I can do this. Now it's almost up to 20 grand, and it's really choking me. So it kills me that sometimes I see, you know, you have DPW trucks that are brandy-new or almost new, and I'm like, shit, I haven't bought a new car in, I can't tell you how long. And I know you said you're on some kind of leasing program or whatever. But, you know, when you, when you see that, or you see people that have oversized vehicles or brandy-new vehicles, I'm like, oh, I can't tell you last time I had a new vehicle. I, I can't tell you that myself. I'm like, I, I keep buying new parts for my old car, and that's, and you'll see me driving my old Volvo, because that's why I can, I can afford those parts. But I mean, it's, it's just, it makes it horrible. So at this moment in time, I don't think I'll be able to live here that, you know. I got maybe five years, and that's it. So just want everybody to know.
I can just tell you, when I first bought my house, my taxes were $2,900. And you know where I live?
Yeah.
And I have 14 and change now.
It's, it's horrible. I mean, but when I, when you see new things coming, and you're not, you're not able to buy anything new, but you see, you're, you know, you're, the structure that you guys got that they're going on or buying new, you're like, why are they spending that kind of money?
If, can I, can I add to that, on that, please, John?
Yeah.
You know, we were asked a couple of years ago, maybe a year or so ago, we were asked to go to the DPW and see some of the vehicles. If you saw what we saw, you'd be shocked at the poor condition that some of those vehicles were in, that we're just nursing along. So some of the new vehicles that you've seen are vehicles that we desperately needed to replace.
Over 10 years old.
Over 10 years old. I'm just telling you...
But I mean, how many brandy-new things they have?
But these are the kind of things that we wish people would come and ask us about. Because if you saw what we saw, it, it, I was like, I can't even believe you guys are still nursing this thing along. I mean, they're, they're in terrible condition, but we're doing our very best to try to not spend on new vehicles unless we have to. And, you know, it's unfortunate, and I'm in the exact same position. When I moved to this town, my taxes were in the threes. You know, I'm probably 15 now. So, and that's not horrendous, but it's still...
Wait, wait, you're only paying 15 and you live on the lake?
I, I live in a cottage. I, I live in an original cottage that's about this big. So with a little bitty piece of property. So what difference, you know, like...
No, no, I'm surprised. I thought the lake was more expensive than that.
When we went down to the DPW, going back even before we did, we went down and looked at all the trucks. Because we didn't know, when me and Ray first come, we want, you'll visit. We had stop signs for floorboards in trucks, in our garbage trucks. So if the garbage trucks were going south, and they loaded, somebody's gonna get hurt. The one way I believe that we think with trucks, and we don't have any brand-new ones, right? We haven't bought a truck in two years, in two years, DPW. I will say, having a mechanic onboard down there, our trucks are maintained and washed on a regular basis. They keep them the way they look. Because the outside looks great, don't mean the inside is that great.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
But we, we were buying pickup trucks, plows, all this stuff under capital money before we went to this program where we don't want. We, we would buy another truck, still 30 years paying off the truck that we got rid of five years ago. And that money was sitting there, so we stopped doing that, all right? We stopped borrowing for small vehicles. That's where we started our, it's basically our own leasing plan, that we budget X amount of money, we go out and we buy it, and then we pay it off. And then in the five years when it has to go, that, or it stays for 10 years, or five years it's paid off. But our trucks are kept well, because we have a really good mechanic staff down there. Um, otherwise, other towns would not be coming to us to do their mechanic work. Some of the trucks, just because you're driving down the road, they look really nice, but once you go to the inside of them, um, the older ones, because I know Frank wants...
We have older ones.
All right, we have trucks that are...
2004s.
Yeah, down there. It's, it's the way our DPW guys treat our vehicles. They don't beat them. I mean, they get beat up in the, in the, in the snowing and stuff like that, but they take care of their vehicles. Like I said, I think the newest one is two years, we bought two years ago.
I mean, and that's just, I guess, again, that's, that's like one of my beefs that I see, but it's just, it's really making it hard to live in this town. I, I mean, I, I'm telling you, I was hoping to retire here. I cannot retire here. I'm gonna have to, and I would, I would give myself five more years, and then I'm hoping one of these days to retire. So, you know, I'm gonna give myself like five more years, and then hopefully I might be able to find, but I'm gonna have to sell.
My parents had to move. My sister moved.
I'm gonna move too.
My wife said I'm staying, because my kids are here.
And that's all of New Jersey. It's not just Bloomingdale.
Well, no, I bought, I bought a house in...
Four times higher.
I bought a house in, in Morris County. Morris County taxes are cheaper.
I bet you it's three times higher. If you look at 30 years, over the last 30 years, I'll bet you anything that it's tripled. You used to pay three grand, now you're paying 12.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I, I got a, a small fixer-up for Morris County. That's where I'm moving.
How long ago did you get?
10 years ago.
All right, so you, you mentioned when you first bought it, it was something like 30 years ago.
Oh, no, this house that I'm living in now.
Yeah, no, I know. I, I bought my house 28 years ago. My taxes were 3,700. I'm now paying 16. We, we're all in the same boat, and it's the system. It's the way it is. We're in the services business that gives you protection from, you know, the cops, right? Gives you fire protection. They're all doing it as volunteers. Uh, it gives you all of your garbage and all of those things, and when you really break it down, it's a hell of a lot cheaper if we have to pay for protection for, for all of those things on our...
I understand, I, I understand that.
But at the end of the day, it's New Jersey. It's the system, it's the pensions, it's the, you know, for, for health insurances.
And, and health insurances, of course, and, and I used to work on the Board of Ed. So being on the Board of Ed, I had to go up against the teachers to see they come down on their deductibles. So, you know, us as taxpayers are paying a higher percentage for everyone to get $100 deductible. I haven't seen $100 deductibles since 1980. Okay, so that's another thing that we could all be saving on, if they were willing to go up on deductibles, which nobody wants to do that, I get it. But I mean, that's just one of the things. And, you know, the other thing that I fought the teachers with, which I think that should happen in other services, is that, you know, if you don't use your vacation, you should lose them, not bank on them for 20 years.
The rules are the rules, yeah.
I know.
We have to play by the rules that are before us.
I, I had, I had a bargain for that one also with the teachers, and I only, I got them down to 20 years, before it was lifetime.
I'm sorry. We don't, we don't bank vacation year over year. They use a vacation and they can only roll over up to one year. It's in our employment manual. Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, sorry, sick days. That's the, if you don't use them, in the real world, if you don't use them, you lose them.
We're also capped now. You're afraid of coming, yes?
I'll be careful. Thanks, babe. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing no one, a motion to close.
John, just, I just gotta add one more thing. Look, it's not without planning. We absolutely plan to bring in extra revenues to continue this little tax increases. Raising some $200, it's going back 14 years, before John and I were passionate about getting in and doing something about it. We only control about 25% of your taxes, not the whole thing, right? But the 25%, we've done a pretty good job.
I believe that.
And we're proud of bringing you that, you know, less than $40 a year average increase. This year, it's because of all the delays, right? The pandemic didn't help. The lawsuit, right, stopping all negotiations, that project could have been done already, right? We're in a delay mode. We don't have those revenues coming in. It's because of the actions of others. It's not because we didn't plan for it, right? And, by the way, this is not an un-normal type of a tax increase. This would have been, you heard the Board of Ed president say it, right? This would have been a norm, $200 increases for the last 14 years, where we kept it to $40. So, look, we're not here to tax you and keep it in the bank. That, I, I fought against that, and I will not allow it while I sit here. And at the end of the day, we have a plan. We're a few years away from that project getting done, and a bunch more money coming to this town, which will then allow us to keep the tax increases low. And I'm passionate about that. So, uh, you know, a lot of what we've done has been fantastic. Unfortunately, we hit a buzzsaw this year, right? We lost all that COVID money, right? That's, that's federal funding, about 500,000. We lost, you know, in federal funding, like Jasmine explained, and then all the insurance, you know, increases that hit us. It, it's, it was a tough year, so. Just wanted to kind of sum it up that way.
Motion to close public hearing.
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're not voting on it tonight.
No, we're just gonna, we gotta adopt the resolution to amend the budget, okay? For the September 2nd.
Do you need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Observing, no.
Yeah.
Writing.
Not yet. This part here, right, Mike? Adopt a resolution number 2025-14, the 2025 budget amendment. Do I have a motion?
Not yet.
So move.
Yes.
Or a motion amendment?
We'll be good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna request a motion to postpone the budget adoption. To amend it, we'll advertise in the Herald News on August 26th, 2025, and the hearing on the amendment will be held on September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion for that?
Mayor, I move the adoption of this budget to be postponed, as the amendment has to be advertised in the newspaper on August 26th, 2025, and the hearing on the amendment will be held on September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pending items. Second final reading and public hearing ordinance number 20-2025, amend the chapter 19 solid waste. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in a municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do we have a motion to read by title?
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic and State of New Jersey amending chapter 19 solid waste management of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay. Kevin, motion to open up public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? Seeing no one, Kevin, motion to close.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion for adoption.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, second final reading and public hearing ordinance number 21-2025, amend the chapter 2, rec fees for volleyball. Do we have a public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in a municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be read, may be made that'd be read by title.
Do we have a motion to read by title?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic and State of New Jersey amending chapter 2, Administration, Sections 2-64.11, fees for recreation programs of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Kevin, motion to open up public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? Seeing no one, a motion to close.
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion for adoption.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. New business. Adopt a resolution number 2025-8.15, Municipal Obligations, motion to pay the bills.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Just to make sure, I say it publicly, we were advised that we don't have to recuse from, you know, paying the bills for Bailey, and even though I live on Bailey, so I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes. Uh, just wanted to make sure I had that to it.
Yeah, the only part you would have to recuse is approving the project.
Got it. Which we stepped out for that.
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Item B, adopt a resolution number 2025-25, 8.16, acknowledging receipt of a 2024 order report. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. You good? Okay. Item C, adopt a resolution number 2025-8.17, Catherine and Billy have blueprints, accept the maintenance bond issued to issue final payment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Item D, adopt a resolution number 2025-8.18, conditionally approving Borough's Fourth Round Affordable Housing Trust Fund Spending Plan. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Okay. Item E, introduction of ordinance number 22-2025, amending chapters 7-13.1, time limited parking. Do I have a motion to read by title?
So move. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic and State of New Jersey amending Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-13, parking time limited on certain streets of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Item F. Um, the second, September 2nd for that?
Yes.
For final approval. Okay. Item F, introduction of ordinance number 23-2025, amend the Chapter 3-8 Police Regulations, Peace in Good Order. Do I have a motion to read by title?
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic and State of New Jersey amending Chapter 3 Police Regulations, Section 3-8, Peace in Good Order of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay.
Second final reading, second.
The second, right, September 2nd. Item H. Uh, G, excuse me. Introduction of ordinance number 24-2025, amend the Chapter 92 Zoning Walls. Do I have a motion to read by title?
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic and State of New Jersey amending Chapter 92 Zoning of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
This will be sent to the planning board for next week.
Yeah, that'll go for.
And it'll be a second, September 2nd adoption.
They're gonna hear that next week, right?
Yep. It's on their agenda.
Okay, okay. Item H, motion to acknowledge a 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Acknowledged receipt of the Bloomingdale's Annual Status Progress Report of the Borough's Flood Plan Management Plan under their Community Rating System. Report prepared by the Borough Engineer and submitted to the New Jersey DEP. Do I have a motion?
Sum up.
Second.
And a roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
If you bring it a room. All right. Okay, can I have a motion to open up late public comment?
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? You still having deer problem?
Yes.
Aaron Esner, Mayor of Lead Esner, is there any real of that?
Yeah.
So we just were wondering, after last month when we came in, any update on?
From what I was, I haven't spoken to animal control. You have?
They can't, animal control, they can't do anything about the deer. She just recommended, just what you said you're doing, spraying some type of chemicals or doing deer resistant, as I said, they're immune to those. She recommended we reach out to the fishing game to see if they have any recommendations of what we can do with the deer population. So I can reach out to them tomorrow and see what they say.
Okay.
Do they allow hunting or something?
Not in a residential area.
Not in a res, you have to be 100 and, if I remember correctly, you have to be 150 feet away from any residential home to hunt. Yes.
So, we've been looking around at what other municipalities do. A lot of places in New Jersey have actually worked with Raritan Valley Community College. They come in and they actually do a survey of population in the, in the, you know, town. Morris County has worked with them, other municipalities. And they do a drone survey over a series of several evenings. I believe it's infrared technology, so they can see from heat and come up with, you know, an estimated count of the population. It seems that, from everything that I've been reading on the surveys that they've done, that a healthy deer population is approximately 10 deer per square acre, or square mile, excuse me. We have 12 in our backyard, it was just a quarter of an acre.
This information that you're sharing, it's, you can find it on Sowell Rivers County website, sowellriver.org. Sowell River is a municipality that has engaged Raritan Valley to run this survey. They mapped the five square miles of Sowell River and found 400 and some odd, almost 500 deer in that five-mile square area, which is 40 times, or many times, the Raritan Valley Commission's that organization's recommendation on population density. So, last week, last week, it would be difficult to see exactly in this picture because of the size of the screen, but on, this is John Street?
I have no idea.
On John Street, block, you know, immediately behind our house, my house is, you know, behind the trees in this picture. On my neighbor's lawn, there were a dozen deer in an area a quarter of the size of this room. A dozen deer. So, in our neighborhood in total, this point about 10 deer per square mile, there's somewhere around two dozen deer in our neighborhood that never leave the neighborhood. They've been down, you know, as I was saying last time, they've been down on people's property. And it's unsustainable. That population density is way too high.
Can I, let me, I don't, obviously, we didn't do the research that you've done. After they did all that, what did they do to get rid of deer?
They instituted a culling program.
Oh yeah, so they instituted culling.
Which is?
So, strategic controlled planned hunting. That they actually contracted with an organization that came in and, you know, professional hunters. And they basically came up with targets of how many they would call. And, you know, in some circumstances, it was like three does and a buck. And, you know, they strategically do that. And obviously, in the beginning, you have to call more because you're dealing with an extreme situation. And then as you continue to control it over the years, you have to, you call less and less because you're being strategic about it. Part of the issue is that there's such a proliferation of food, right? We're planting things that deer love to eat. There's native vegetation. It's not just the deer, the problem with the deer, because it causes other problems, right? So you have a deer population that feeds on native species, which then opens the door for invasive species to take control of areas. You're decimating areas where native, where other populations of native animals would proliferate because now they don't have this low-level ground cover of native species where other animals live. So you have things that are being significantly out of bounds. An adult deer eats 10 pounds of food a day. A day, one deer. So, 12 deers, that's 120 pounds of food, just the deer in our backyard. That's not sustainable.
Let me, just, and I'm gonna put the animal lovers out there. What would your neighbors think that love seeing the deer? They might not, and we have hunters go in and, I don't know how, I don't know how that.
I'm a lifelong vegetarian.
Okay.
And I can still be pro deer control. Because it's not, it's not about killing of animals. It's about.
Balance.
Balance. And because other animals, their habitats are being destroyed. You're killing something, something's dying because things are getting out of bounds.
I could just tell you, in your neighborhood, and I don't know how long you guys lived in the house that you're in, but.
20.
20-some years?
21.
Going back, and some people, Mike will probably remember this. They were going to put fields behind your house. And the people that used to live on Cedar by your house went crazy because of the deer and the bears. They love them. So, I'm just, I just remember that. I know, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely no fan of deer. I made, I made that pretty plain last time you came up here, right? I can't stand them. They eat up all my stuff and it just drives me nuts. However, I see what the mayor's saying, like, there definitely are gonna be people that would be irate if we instituted a culling to kill deer. However, I did look into culling as well after you guys came up here. And I was talking to some folks that, they do that more in New York State. And I think that there are certain areas where you can do it, right? Because you can't have hunters going into people's backyards, right? Nobody wants to see that and that's certainly illegal. So it becomes on where you could do that. And I think that's what we would have to figure out.
Well, the areas behind where they live is privately owned by the Salvation Army camp.
Right.
So.
We're on the Hebert Turnpike.
Real of that.
Okay, you're down by, okay. All right. So, maybe we can cut.
Raritan Valley, what did you say? Raritan Valley.
Raritan Valley Community College.
Oh, wasn't that, sorry.
Yeah, and I don't know, this softens it a little bit. But these culling groups, oftentimes, they donate the deer meat to food pantry. Maybe that softens it a little bit for some people.
I think we'll make the phone call.
Sowell River's a good example. All of these issues because the protests and, you know, kind of animal-friendly groups that, you know, protest against it, Sowell River's had to do also. So maybe he, somebody on that committee or council can kind of give some insight into how they've dealt with it.
Okay.
But it, in speaking to other people that live across North Jersey, it's kind of common across the area. It's, no one haunts. The population, the near population is kind of unchecked, right? So, spread of disease, Lyme disease, et cetera. I, in, right down next to the railroad tracks in downtown Butler, there by the post office, there, it's the next town over, but there's a sign posted talking about controlling dog waste, right? Little sign that reminds everyone that you have to clean up after your dog.
We just did that, yes.
Pollution and all of these other things. And I was reading the sign and thinking, well, you got the dozen deer. Who's cleaning up after them, right? They're eating 10 pounds of food per deer a day. That waste is going everywhere.
All over everyone's yard.
Like, it's, it's an issue.
And the other issue is that also, what caused it to be further out of bounds is that in a natural setting, in the woods, deer typically are having one, maybe two fawns. And in a situation where they have man-made food sources, basically, that allows them to proliferate, it helps them in some way. So they, they actually have more now. They're actually more inclined to have two or three fawns. Whereas in natural, in the wild, where they, where it's less sustainable and they have to forage more, they have one, maybe two. So, you know, you have situations where it's just sort of this, it's a problem that will never solve itself.
Well, I think the only thing that we can do is contact Sowell River and see what they're doing. I, I think we should have a conversation with the people that they used and see how they go about doing it and see what happens. So, do you have an email or?
Yeah.
Can?
Write it down for you.
Or just, I'm Jade Demontow at BloomingdaleNJ.net. Just send me an email and then I'll have yours, just so we can communicate with you.
Jade Demontow?
Yes.
No apostrophe.
No apostrophe. There is, but not an email.
If you have any issues as well, you can find it on our website.
Yeah, it's right on the website. You can, when they go there, you get it there and just send it, this way I'll have yours and then we can, all right? You're welcome. Thank you for coming down. Anyone else?
Same thing. I live down the street from them and it's horrible. Right now, in my yard, I've got piles of poop, this much, all over my yard. So, yeah, we talk about, you know, dog waste. I've got tons of deer waste. And yes, they do rest, I'll come at all hours in the night and they're sleeping in my yard.
Okay.
But that's, it's a big issue. Yeah, and they eat all my plants. And I spray, I constantly spray and they constantly just, when you stop, when it rains and it takes it off, they just, it's like chow time. So all my houses are gone at this point. They're all gone. They're eating my hydrangeas. It's a sad, it's a sad thing.
Well, we're gonna, we'll contact these people. I don't know, I'm not making any promises, but we'll see, you know, because there'll be two sides of this.
You know, if they could just pick them, maybe pick them up and put them in the woods someplace else far away, you know, relocate them. That would be fine if they wouldn't find their way back.
We have to see what these people say. I didn't know that they even existed. Yeah, yeah.
They do that with thunks and other things. And I also was just wondering, the parking, or not the parking, the sidewalk area in front of that new food place, who, who approved of it? And my only question is, it comes juts out really far and it's very narrow in this one spot.
It's really far because we're used to really, the way it was. I went down there and measured and it's all done to DOT spec. It was the Kitsa County project and the county met with both landowners and explained what they were going to do. They both agreed to it. Okay? It's a dangerous intersection, it's been for years.
Yeah.
Coming out of there, the stop sign is 20 feet behind where the road is. Nobody stopped for it. They always jetted out into, into Hebert Turnpike or Main Street. The liquor store got deliveries with big trucks and they would be, their tail ends would be out at the Hebert Turnpike and people going to the other lane.
Where are those trucks gonna go now?
They're gonna go, there's, there's a loading dock in the back of the IGA, okay? And they, I know the IGA has a trailer before this happened, the tractor trailer's across the street. The guy brings everything over on the pallet, you'll see, they go early morning. The county, the way they do things when they do roads over, all right? We had two major incidents with people getting hit by cars. One was a fatality there, just up by Wayne Bedding. So when the county came in and they told us this plan, and actually, Mike and I went down, met with them with the two landowners and they laid everything out. And, excuse me, and they approved what they wanted to do. They actually put new drainage in for them down by their, by their stores. They lost parking spots. There's parallel parking, just like there is up in the rest of Main Street. I went down there on Sunday and parked my truck, and I have a 2500 Dodge, in one of them parking spots and got out of my truck with traffic coming on a Sunday morning. Now, it's not as much as it is at 5:00 on a Sunday morning. But I had no problem getting in and out of my truck. I wanted to just see for myself. It's all done to DOT spec. The parking spots are done to that. The width of the street is done to that. The county, when they do things over and they square off Reeves Ave or anywhere, they put those, they call them bump outs. And that creates the inline, parallel parking. So that first car is no chance of getting hit by somebody else pulling out. It's within, within their spot. And then there's a piece that sits out there.
And my only complaint was, I just drove through it today and it's just really tight in one spot. There's one where, where I guess where they allow the parallel parking them, that jut out, I guess, that you're talking about.
When they repave the road, which is gonna be done, they have, they're gonna put two, four crosswalk push-button signs up Main Street so people can cross safely. All right? So that's gonna happen. Once that's done, they're gonna mill and pave the whole street from Riverdale to the, almost to the fork on the Glenwell app split. The yellow line is where the road was. Once they come in and they pave it, there'll be new striping going down. The new line will be there. But I personally went down and measured and compared to the rest of Main Street. It's exactly the same as it is in front of River Beer. It's, it's all within the same. And actually, they moved the curb an additional six inches back when they, when they, when they first did it. Because I drove there and I saw the painted lines, all right? And I said, it's tight. And I said, it's tight. I said, this just makes no sense.
I come to a lot of intersection every single day. And I have to say, while it feels tight, I do think it's a matter of making a left-hand turn is very, very dangerous.
Yeah.
And on a regular basis, we found a bad intersection because people generally don't park in front of Sloan Park. It was so wide because you got a lot of drive around. Where people will be waiting to make turns and cars decide the best activity to do is drive around it. It's not, okay, I understand what's in a hurry at Hamburg Turnpike. We're talking about Ohio Road, you're driving through parking spots that have kids and people in it. So I think that's why it feels like it juts out so far.
Just, I'll elaborate a little bit on that. In front of the park, once they're done, is gonna be yellowed out. So when people go around, they're not gonna be going over the parking spots. All right? When we have a festival there, we're gonna close the road down, we can use that. We can put the food trucks, whatever, like we just did over the weekend. And it actually worked really nice, hey, with all the vendors that were on the sidewalk. They kind of enjoyed it. And then the ice cream store, they got more involved than they normally did, so that part is a positive.
I do have a question now.
You just gotta wait there.
Okay.
So, just wait till the project's done. And I see all the stuff going on, I read everything, but people are making comments, but it's people that don't know the project's not finished, are just looking at the way. And it's a big change. All right? It's hard to accept a large change like that. I drive a fire truck, drove one down there, I had no problem pulling up a fire truck in and out of that intersection.
Well, just cars that park next to Sloan Park, it makes it tight after a while, though.
Yeah, but I made the left on Reeves and made a right coming back out to bring the truck back. There was no problem pulling in and pulling out. It was no different in Leary, it was no different in Ryerson, it was no different. Van Damme's a little bit tougher because you have a blind spot coming from Riverdale. And they're also gonna put what they call blockout lanes in there, which, in the intersection, on the east and westbound side for one of Van Damme and one there, they're gonna white out.
Yeah, okay.
So, when a car comes up and there's traffic, that'll be open so cars can get in and out easily without being...
Block the block, okay.
Yeah, block the block, yeah.
Yes.
My concern is, like, when it's late at night and you're driving, well, and the fact that, like, the ice cream place might use that, that area as like a little, like to put tables out and stuff. Will they build any, like, ballards just to protect the, if anyone's sitting down, like, having a meal?
God forbid somebody jumps the curb.
Yeah, because it just, I could just, and also, like, are they gonna somehow, maybe with reflectors so you could see? Because like at night, if you're driving, you might, you don't, you might not see. I mean, maybe once, once everything's lined, you can see it. And then...
But just remember, the parking spots have to be lined. It's all reflective. Signs are going in. 20-minute park, that's what we kind of approved tonight. There's like 20-minute park by Wayne Bedding there, so it'll keep people, people don't park there all day long because we have a bus stop there, so if people want...
20-minute parking in front of the nail salon? It takes like me an hour and a half to be...
This is to deter people from parking. We have people that go get the bus and they go to New York and leave the car there all day.
Oh, okay.
All right? Nobody's gonna get tickets. We just had a set, a limit, and that was the suggestion from traffic to do that.
But I really think, I mean, if the ice, if little kids are gonna be, like, milling around and enjoying it, like, I could see like as a, like a pavilion, like a, like a center square. It's nice, that whole idea of like a center. But some kind of jersey, not a jersey bearer, because those are ugly, but some kind of ball, something nice to block.
That is up to...
Or flower pots that are really heavy duty to be a divider.
It's up to the landowner because the county only owns to the curb. And people don't realize they don't own behind the curb to the building. The landowner owns all of that. Okay? That's their property. It's never been county property. And on the other side, by Wayne Bedding, that's all owned by the landowner. That we were all using as Hamburg turnpike.
I know you, and also, like, we have the lighting, you know, those nice posts that we have our Christmas? Like, are they, are they gonna be, because it's their property, they have to buy the lights?
And then they have to tear it all up and put the electric in. So...
I think it's a good, a good comparison to this, maybe the consideration that, like, so if you have sidewalks in front of your home, you have to maintain the sidewalks even though if the borough chooses to replace and maintain the curb sidewalks in your, in your home you can. In the same way that this project is done, those property owners cannot be responsible for those sidewalks. So if they choose to put in canisters and maintain them in a way that's acceptable...
I'm just thinking about people, like, we had a car drive into the nail salon right in, right next to Danny's Pizzeria and like, you know, thank God there was like a pony wall in between the glass to like save the people on the other side. If, if some road rage thing happens where a guy, the guy's coming out of that parking lot and wants to swerve around, you know, you got the sidewalk right there. Like, some kind of barrier to protect that might be a good idea.
But it's really no different than the way it was. Anybody could've came up in the middle of the night and ran right into the building because there was nothing.
They did have the ballots. The ballots were in front, like...
From the building?
Yeah.
They were there.
Now there's posts.
There's posts holding up the...
No, those yellow...
It's up to the owner. I don't know. I just, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't know. With the work already done, I would say probably not. Because that's... The parking spaces aren't there. Yeah. Charles?
Charles Carvalho, say if I really have. Actually, I'm gonna piggyback off two previous things. Deer, say if I really have, I feel the same thing. It's also a safety issue. We have so many deer in town, somebody's gonna start hitting them and getting into accidents. So, people may love the deer, but they gotta think of the safety. When you drive through town now, you always gotta be careful. But you gotta be extra careful with the deer. So that's one point. The other point regarding the parking over here, my concern is, it's a new configuration. When snowplows come through, I just feel they're gonna hit the jutouts. So we have to mark them out every time you got a snowfall. Particularly if there's no cars parked in front of...
Remember, the guys plowing, work for the county, they know what the county does.
They know what, but this is gonna be new for them. So they may...
It's not, and it's really not, because the county does this all over the place. It's new to us. Okay?
But it's gonna be new to the driver because that jutout wasn't there last year.
I don't know where, what other towns he plows, because they go from Patterson to West Milford and plow.
Yeah, so, I mean, I followed a truck there Saturday and the truck barely got through in the lane. So to your point, you can measure it, the truck can drive through. Put a plow on that truck, he's gonna really be sticking out. So he, he's gonna be hitting that jutout, I predict.
I hope not.
So we need to be aware of that. So, when they hit that jutout...
I can tell you, when it was all being marked out, I had a conversation with the county engineer about everything that you're asking about. Because I didn't like the jutouts at all, I want to do away with them because you plow curb to curb. Normally, they do that. And I said, well, this is the county's plan. They also had the same plan up at the old Walkers when we were dealing with that. They were gonna do the same thing up there, because they don't allow backing out. Any county road, you can't back out. Anytime they do that, do a road over, they stop it. Everything's parallel parking, no matter where you go. Main Street Ponton Lakes is a county road. It's all parallel parking, all the way down.
But they don't have jutouts, do they?
It's old. It's not, they haven't redone that.
My concern is the jutout, yeah, that, I think the plows are gonna be hitting it, is what I fear.
Okay.
My third final question. You had in an addendum, an introduction to the ordinance regarding zoning walls. It wasn't up on the website. How does one get a copy to see what we just approved, without reading it or seeing it?
It was introduced. It wasn't approved.
Well, it was introduced, but if I wanna make a comment, I don't know what I'm making a comment on.
But you can't make a common introduction.
Introduction?
No.
Okay. When can we make?
That will be, that goes to the planning board. And then when the planning board revisits, they give their opinions on it or recommendations to it. Then it comes back to us for adoption, which will probably be September 2nd. Because counties...
Okay, so it'll be posted so we can review it and then, then that's when you vote on it. So it's just introduction to begin the process. Okay. Thanks for that clarification, that was more procedural question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no one, a motion to close.
Senator.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. A long night. Okay, our next, we do have, we do have three... Matters of personnel in executive session, but there'll be no action taken afterwards.
Jasmine?
Our next meeting is September 2nd, 7:00 PM. Thank you all. Do I have a motion to go into exec?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Andy?